What I say because Brett don't like me anyway.
Guys, ready? Everybody ready?
Yep.
We'll call an order of the Benton County Commissioners Meeting. Please join us for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's nice to see a crowd here today. Thanks, everyone, for coming. Beth, roll call, please.
Sure. Commissioner Schlongen.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Heinem.
Here.
Commissioner Kapinski.
Here.
Commissioner Pop.
Here.
Thank you.
Great. Move or approve the agenda. Monty?
Mr. Chair, you have a new consent item. Let's make that consent item number five. That is regarding the consumption display permit for Northern Oaks events. Second, we could please add a closed session for attorney-client consultation at 10:30. And we should also add, Mr. Chair, as when we return from closed session, we should also have a potential action to approve any agreements reached in closed session. And that is it.
Move for approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If I oppose, motion carries. The county board meetings are broadcasted live and video recorded on YouTube. Please refrain from speaking from the audience area and come to the podium so that the viewers can hear you. County Board observes Roberts' rules of order for its meeting, so please obtain the board's chair's consent before adjusting the county board. Public comments are generally reserved for the open forum segment or public hearings. However, public comment on other agenda items may be allowed at the discretion of the board chair. As we begin today, please turn the cellphones off and/or put them on vibrate. Thank you. Next, open forum. So, on the open forum, we ask that you limit it to three minutes, please, and come to the podium. The first one is Mr. Zech. Yes, thank you, sir. Watch your head.
Hey, thank you. I wrote some letters to...
Sir, name and address, please.
John Zech. Address 10246 170th Avenue, Oak Park.
Thank you.
I wrote some letters to Monty a couple of days ago. I appreciate his professionalism, but it's pretty lengthy. I talked to the chief of police about some issues. It's really disturbing to me. Maybe I'm taking it out of context or whatever, but I would like to give this to the board, the letters I wrote. I'm not mad. I'm looking for... Some people in the county seem to be very upset. We all have stress. I just want to voice this to the board the best way I can. I don't know. I deal with a lot of these issues. It's very stressful for me. It's all documented in here. I don't know what to do about it. I can give you guys a letter. It's kind of self-explanatory in here without taking everybody's time up. And we'll kind of leave it at that. I don't know, would that be okay, or...
Yeah, that'd be great. We can go ahead and have your letter, and we'll read through it, and we'll see what we can do from there.
So, like I say, it has some really serious issues. I've dealt with this before. This is about the 10th letter I've written of this magnitude.
Okay.
I'm afraid to even talk about it. I'm not... It's a...
And that's fine. Just, that's, we understand. So, what I would do is probably just let us have the letters. We'll read through it.
Okay.
And then we'll get back to you.
What I will say is, everybody's warm-hearted. Everybody means well.
Right.
But there are some issues I don't know what to do with. Are you guys going to contact me, or do I go through... Who do I talk to, or...
So, I think we'll address this at some point in time in the near future here, and we'll be sending a letter out to you, sir.
Okay.
Just so you know, so we'll respond back to you.
Okay. I guess just to make it, I don't know how to say it as good as I can. This is about the 10th letter I've written, like this. Five of these letters, I'm afraid to say it, were followed by fatalities. It's hurtful. I'm not here scaring anybody, but it's all in the letter, so... With that said... I'm not mad at anybody, so, okay?
Okay. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, guys.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, that's it for the open forum.
Is there anybody else?
Unless there's anybody else. That's not, that's not going to be on the agenda.
Mike Radka, 11609 45th Street. I purchased some property by Gilman, applied for a driveway. I think Scott, Ed may be familiar with it, dealt with Mark Lloydell. Wants me to share a driveway. I'm not one for mixing agricultural residential driveways. I've got semis I've got going in and out of there. The application I put in, he rewrote, revised, never denied mine, but rewrote to add a driveway next to it, want me to add a T-cover, which I cannot find, and I feel I don't think I need to put something in that county can't provide me. To put in, in his revised application, it asked if T-cover unavailable, two aprons, drive-by side-by-side, okay? That goes against county policy, two driveways and 330 feet. I'm sorry. How can I be forced to do something that's wrong and then want me to put something in that can't be found? And then through the whole process, I got to move fiber optics to another drive, or another someone's mailbox, a lot of other issues.
Commissioner Johnson, I believe you're working on this.
Yeah, Mike and I have had numerous discussions along with Chris and Mr. Lloydell, so it sounds like we don't have a resolution yet.
Okay, I suggest we get together and come to a resolution.
I guess I was thinking we had a resolution, but it doesn't sound like we do, so...
If you read where he rewrote the application and put in there, once he said that if the T-cover cannot be purchased, you can put two of them with aprons, I'd rather put it at 330 feet where it's supposed to be. County rules, it's not a hazard. I mean, two driveways side-by-side with a four-wheeler snowmobile, I don't think is real safe.
Okay, well, we'll definitely get this addressed. Commissioner Pop?
Well, I think I've been preaching on this, sharing private driveways with agriculture equipment for some years now, and I do, we're going to have some kind of a discussion with Highway about changing our policies here, or at least looking at it. Our assistant engineer has to go out and take a look at this and see what's going on before we actually deny or approve the request, so we are working on this. Mike?
Thank you.
This has been a topic for some time.
It's been a while.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Open forum. Okay. Next, we'll move to the consent agenda items. We've got one through five. What do the commissioners want to do with one through five?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on them? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If I oppose, motion carries. Next, Monty, MICA legislative update. The clicker is gone?
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Good morning.
Yes, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Matt Mossman, Executive Director of the Minnesota Inter-County Association. It is genuinely, we really do genuinely enjoy getting out around the state for these visits and out of St. Paul to talk to all of you, all of the member counties. So, MICA is made up of 15 of the larger counties, not including Hennepin-Ramsey in the state, who come together around public policy in exchange of information professionally at the staff level as well. And so, we really appreciate your membership and the opportunity, as always, to come in post-legislative session and talk to you about what happened, and in this case, a much longer list of what didn't happen. So, the 2002, just to give you a little bit of background, and the way we have this framed up is, frankly, we were on the verge of an extremely good session for the work that counties do. And for background, you know, for the public and others, counties, most of the work of counties, or a lot of the work of counties, is implementing requirements and mandates and programs that the state puts in place and oftentimes doesn't fully pay for. And so, then it comes down to local property taxpayers to fill in the gap, as you know. So, budget surpluses are a real genuine opportunity for counties to frankly get more resources from state government to pay for those things that state government is requiring counties to implement, among other changes. And so, we had, at the start of this 2022 session, a historic state budget surplus. $9.3 billion was the state general fund budget surplus, and that was just for fiscal '22, '23. They were projected to also have, if you look at the bottom of this slide, an additional $6 billion ongoing in fiscal '24, '25. A way to think about that, $6 billion is if you divide that in two, because Minnesota does a two-year budget at a time, the projected surplus would have supported about $3 billion in annual changes in state policy, whether that be tax relief, additional investments in state-determined programs, or some combination of the two. In addition to that, the state has the most flush budget reserves that they have ever had. And I just want to underscore again, we have budget surpluses. They've been more rare over the last 20 years than budget deficits, but this is a historic amount. This is roughly about 15% of the state budget on top of budget surpluses. As of May 17, the governor and legislative leaders signed a global agreement to allocate... Well, let me just say quickly that dropping down to the bottom of this list, earlier in legislative session, they did use about $2.3 billion of that $9.3 billion to restore the unemployment insurance trust fund and make some other changes to the state budget. So, as of May 17, there was about $12 billion left over the three years. The governor and legislators signed a, what I call the four-by-four-by-four agreement, an agreement that would have put $4 billion over the three years into tax relief, $4 billion over the three years into education, health and human services, public safety, and other programs, and would have left $4.2 billion on the bottom line in addition to the budget surpluses. So, again, would have left the state in an extremely healthy state budget condition. Conference committees unfortunately were unsuccessful at resolving differences in some of the most major areas. K-12 education, which had a billion-dollar budget over the three years, human services, which had a billion-dollar target over the three years, public safety, which had a $450 million target over the three years, transportation and housing. Tentative agreements were reached but not passed on tax cuts and property tax relief, environment and energy, jobs, workforce, and some other programs. And perhaps most notably, every other year is considered a major bonding bill on the part of the state, which is just critical to keeping both state and public infrastructure. Frankly, we're already behind on much of that infrastructure, as you know. Roads, bridges, water, sewer infrastructure, buildings that are publicly owned, and this is a critical piece and that is relied on once every, at least once every two years, and the bonding bill also did not pass. I spend most of my time on your behalf, and Nancy with human services and Steve with transportation will come up and cover some ground specific in that area, and then I'll come up at the end and clean up. But I spend most of my time on tax and fiscal policy and then some environment work. One thing that did pass in MICA's tax and fiscal priorities is a ag drought relief and broadband got put in there. The most significant investment that the state has made, and it's been making a number of good investments over the last couple of years, in broadband. They put $50 million, $25 million each year from the general fund into broadband, state broadband grants. They also directed $60.7 million of money the state is receiving in capital projects, money from the ARPA, American Restoration Act funds, and $100 million in federal IIJA money into broadband grants. That last part of that sentence, broadband grant policy changes is perhaps even more critical. Historically, broadband grants have been limited to up to 50, no more than 50% of total project costs. They created, up to $30 million of this money is to go to a low-density population grant program whereby if there's a low-density area, those grants can be up to 75% of project costs, so that's really critical for some, many areas of greater Minnesota and northern Minnesota. Also, they put in place what is called the line extension program. So, if you happen to be an individual property here or there, whether it's a business property or a residence, that is close to a high-speed internet line, but you don't actually have service yourself, those properties will be able to register with the state, and there will be a reverse auction to hire vendors to complete line extension to those, service to those properties at a subsidy of up to $25,000 per property. So, that's some really good news. What did not happen, the omnibus tax bill was tentatively agreed to, and of course, it was part of a package, so nothing was going to happen unless the whole package of spending and tax relief programs were all agreed on. And so, the tax bill never came to a vote. The tax bill included, and I'm just going to focus on a number of items that impact counties. Obviously, there were other tax relief around social security, income not being taxable in Minnesota, reduction in the individual income tax rate, and other things. That did not happen. But we at the county level obviously take property taxes quite seriously, and usually there's a number of tools that the state has that help with that. One of them is county program aid. The bill would have increased county program aid by $30 million a year. That would have meant about $316,000 every year relative to base of an increase for Benton County. They put $9.2 million annually into increased payment in lieu of taxes for natural resource lands, $6 million annually for money for soil and water conservation districts. There would have been a $30 million annual reduction in the state general property tax that businesses and seasonal recreational property pay, total of about $175 million a year, and direct relief through the combination of property tax refund programs and homeowner refund programs. Those are the income-adjusted household income, based on household income, as well as targeted refunds, which is not based on household income. That is a refund program that if your taxes go up more than 10% from one year to the next, you are able to get some relief. Then there would have also been an expansion of the homestead market value exclusion, which is direct relief for homeowners, an expansion of the senior deferral program. And I just call out no levy limits or limited market value. I call that out because we did have to play defense at part of the legislative session because that was actively considered, putting limitations in on value growth, and we were able to avoid that from happening. As you all know, that's not necessarily the way property taxes works. Values going up does not necessarily mean taxes go up. So, that's the way things happened. You know, if there is a special session, there is some chatter, hopefully they would pick up that bill and pass it. It's not necessarily the case that that would be the starting point, or it's not necessarily the case it'll be the starting point of 2023. But that's what's in the bill and hopefully would happen if a special session happens. With that, I'll turn it over to Steve unless there's any questions. I'll step back out later.
Any questions for Matt?
Nope.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Matt.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Steve Novak, I handle the transportation issues for MICA. It's always good to be in Benton County, so I had hoped to be here this morning to tell you about the significant progress we made in this session on our top transportation priorities, which, just to remind you, were, basically came down to four major things. The first one was to try to guarantee that the state would provide all the necessary match money for Minnesota to get the full amount of federal money that's coming to us, should be coming to us in total, from the big federal infrastructure bill that passed last year. That was that issue number one. Issue number two is we were looking for a record amount of bonding money for county roads and county bridges, which is an issue that we track from year to year to year. Third one, establish the base funding for the local road wetland replacement program. This is an issue I know you're very familiar with. We've had lots of difficulty with the state financial share in the last decade. A couple of times, we've gotten to the point where the 10 districts were basically down to very few credits. And when that happens, of course, all the work that Chris has done with your local contracting firms for your local roads and bridges get jeopardized. In other words, you could lose your spring construction season. So, it's a very important issue, and we had a plan both for money and budget structure to solve that problem going forward. The final issue, which became the issue that all of this stuff tipped on, and unfortunately it tipped the wrong way, tipped over, was to complete the process of transferring the money on the sales tax on auto parts. And there was a big dispute between the House and the Senate on how best to do that. Unfortunately, with partisanship sort of running the roost here, plenty of blame to go around on both sides, that issue in transportation became the focal point, and the sides sort of solidified behind their positions, and they stacked everything up behind it like at a poker table, and in the end, it didn't get done. So, that's the background. Let me just tell you now what happened. This was a long, short session. It's the even year. It's supposed to be the bonding year. There was high expectations for a bonding bill that was going to have significant amounts of money for transportation in it. I can tell you that in terms of the way the hearings proceeded, the subjects that were dealt with, you know, this is a pretty normal, busy legislative session. When we passed the committee deadlines and the House and the Senate started to pass their individual bills and move towards conference committees, transportation really came down to two major bills. The first one was the supplemental transportation funding bill. This committee, like a lot of conference committees in this modern era, didn't have a lot of public meetings. But the first one that they did have was very positive from the standpoint that both the House and the Senate publicly stated that they were going to support significant amounts of money, the full amount of money necessary to guarantee the complete transfer of the federal transportation dollars. So, that was very optimistic. They pegged a number at 40 million, but if it took more, they were going to put it in there. And those were public statements in the hearing, so that was very encouraging. The second thing that was very encouraging going into this conference committee period, oftentimes in the last decade, transportation has not been treated that well by legislative leadership in terms of the amount of money it's been given to put its package together. That was not the case this year. They were given $360 million for fiscal year '22, '23, and an additional $486 million for fiscal year '24, '25. More than enough to do those priority items that I had previously mentioned with a real focus on providing the state money for the federal match. It also had in it the sales tax on auto parts, and it had 30 million as a low number from the House side on basically cash for county roads. And the House, who's been traditionally a little weaker on this in recent years, had an additional $80 million for what they called major bridges. So, I mean, we really felt like we were set to go because the main money for county roads and bridges was going to be in the bonding bill, and here we were getting additional money upfront in the supplemental budget bill. And it also had in it the issue that turned out to be pivotal in all of the political negotiations, which is the sales tax on auto parts. You may or may not remember that back in 2017, Conference Committee on Transportation, this was a major initiative of the Republicans, basically a way to not have to vote on a gas tax. They were going to provide the money by shifting revenues that currently go to the general fund from sales tax on auto parts and dedicate it to transportation. In that conference committee five years ago, they shifted basically half of it and subsequently put it into statute, put into statute a number, 146 million bucks. This session was all about transferring the rest of it. The House didn't want to transfer any of it, but they conceded on that and agreed to transfer, but they wanted a 60/40 split between roads and bridges and transit. The Senate wanted 100% to zero roads and bridges. And that's the way it stayed all the way to the last day of the session, and then the House moved to 80/20. A lot of people thought that that would be a breakthrough that might get things going. It didn't. The Senate didn't move off 100%, and because they stacked all of these other things behind it, in the end, there was no agreement in the conference committee, no supplemental budget bill for transportation, and a lot of these significant issues just went by the wayside. Then that takes us to the bonding bill. Now, Matt Mossman and I, on transportation issues, together separately, met many, many times with Senator Bach, who was the chair of the bonding committee in the Senate, and Representative Fu Lee, the chair in the House. As we moved towards the end of the session in that final week, many conversations with Bach right up to the last few hours that they had settled on 75 million and 75 million in a bonding bill for county roads and county bridges. Now, on a 20-to-30-year spectrum, that would have been a record amount of money. So, that was right where we were trying to be. We were positioned. We had everything we needed to have in place. But the one thing we can't do for them is vote. If they won't take the bills up and vote, there's no lobbying strategy for that. They only have the power to do that, and they refuse to do it on both of these bills. Inside this bill, along with the money for county roads and bridges, was also a Senate provision that earmarked significant amounts of money for 22 different highway projects around the state. 14 of them were in MICA counties. It would have been interesting to find out exactly which ones were going to get funded, but in the end, there was no bonding bill to vote on. So, that was even worse than the supplemental transportation bill, where at least they had a bill before them. And then that takes us to the local road wetland mitigation program, an issue that I know you're familiar with. We've worked on it for a long time, and they put a big patch on it in the October special session a year and a half ago, which helped a lot. Now, what we wanted was to have this particular program be a standardized budget item under Bowser to help in these debates at the end of the session, where this issue always seems to not quite make it. We did get all that work done. Bowser agreed to do it, testified to it, and then we put the money in. The money that was pegged was 14 million in bonds and 6 million in cash because a lot of these districts are depleted, and you can't wait for these things to grow naturally. There are private entities out there that do this. They're more expensive, which is why we need the cash. And we got, we had the cash pegged at $6 million. We talked to all the key legislators on both sides. They all wanted to do it, but the larger scope of partisan politics just kind of was like an anchor on the whole structure, and it didn't happen. And there's no real way to put frosting on this cake. I mean, it's just very frustrating for everybody involved, very disappointing, but that's the result we got. Last thing I want to say, and I referenced them earlier, is I know you know what a good county engineer you've got in Chris Byrd, but we meet monthly with our county engineers, and we do a lot of teleconferencing. Various bills come up with not a lot of notice, and the call goes out for various county engineers to come down, testify before the House and the Senate. And I can tell you that Chris is one of the very best, and he's a real leader in his own organization, and it's been a pleasure to work with him. So, I know he's a good voice for Benton County and for MICA. We appreciate it. With that, I would conclude and be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Steve?
Thanks, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Nancy Seleski, and I represent MICA in the area of Health and Human Services, and it's a pleasure to be here this morning. So, although there was no budget bill that passed in Health and Human Services along with the rest of the budget, there was a comprehensive mental health bill that they did come to an agreement on the very last night of session that I just wanted to mention. They did spend about $93 million, and it did include a number of county priorities, including an additional $20 million was spent on adult mental health initiative grants, AMHI grants. This was in response to a proposed reform that DHS had come up with that would have taken existing funding from the existing... taken existing funding from the existing initiatives and spread it out amongst the state. And so a lot of the existing initiatives would have, you know, taken a big hit on that. So with that, we all agreed that we needed to get more money into the system. So we went to work, and we were successful in getting $20 million additional dollars into that system. There's also a direction to DHS that no existing region receives less money than the amount that they received in fiscal year 22. So that was a, a good, a good piece that was part of that adult, that mental health bill. Another priority was competency restoration, and this was also included in that adult mental health bill. The deal that was struck creates a state competency restoration board within the judiciary system and provides funding for forensic navigators for individuals who are deemed not competent to stand trial. This was a win for counties because at one time, they were looking to us counties to deliver these navigator services. So in the end, it became a state, state board that's similar to the Guardian Ed Leitem Board. And they did put $11 million a year into that, into that board, along with another $5 million for district courts for the competency exam, examination costs. So that was also included in that bill. Few other things I would mention, they did increase the mobile crisis base by $4 million a year. They addressed children's mental health by creating and funding children's residential crisis stabilization services, and DHS is to seek federal approval for that. They put $1.2 million into mental health urgency rooms, $2 million into shelter-linked mental health grants, and another $2 million into school-linked behavioral health grants. So that bill was signed into law by, by the governor. And again, one of the very last things that they accomplished on that final Sunday before we adjourned. Another standalone bill that did pass dealt with the opioid settlement. You're all familiar that Minnesota is going to be receiving over $300 million a year from the manufacturers and distributors of, distributors of opioids. And under that agreement, counties and cities are getting 75% of those dollars directly. So it's about $222 million. The other 25% is distributed through grants by DHS. And this legislation just basically set the framework for, for those dollars that will be coming in over the next several years. There is language that does require us counties and cities that do receive these direct appropriations to report annually to DHS how those dollars were being used. That also was signed into law by Governor Walz a few weeks ago. Finally, when it became clear that there was not going to be a budget bill, the conference committee did put together a policy-only bill, items that cost no money. I'll just give you a little bit of a flavor of, of what was included in that bill, again, which passed on that final Sunday before they adjourned. They did expand the scope of mental health data that can be shared with law enforcement agencies when they're responding to a person that might be having a mental health or, for a chemical health issue. They established an opioid substance use and addiction subcabinet within the executive branch. They did increase eligibility for people that are on SNAP from 165% of federal poverty to 200% of federal poverty. And they did extend the amount of time that a homeless person or family can stay in transitional housing from 24 to 36 months. So again, this was a bill that cost no money. Governor has signed that into law as well. So what didn't happen, again, with the exception of the mental health stuff that I just mentioned, very, very little in, in the way of HHS, I just want to illustrate the differences between the Senate and House's approach to the, to the budget bill that they were looking at. As Matt mentioned, the target for spending was $1 billion, and the Senate would have spent that billion dollars largely on long-term care workforce issues. So rate increases for individuals working in nursing facilities, PCAs, non-emergency medical transportation rates and the like. The House wanted to spend their, the billion dollars not only on long-term care, but they also wanted to see some substantial investment in childcare, some dollars into the homelessness. And also, they had over $100 million proposed in public health issues, which would have included family home visiting and emergency preparedness. So those were kind of the differences between the two bills. Again, did not happen. We'll be going back next year in a, in a regular budget year and trying to pick up some of these things next year. The last thing I just want to mention is that the Child Protection Legislative Task Force is starting up again. You recall that this start, this came about in 2015 when a child died at the hands of, of a parent or a stepparent. The legislature kind of moved quickly into gear and came up with a report that included 93 recommendations, a lot of which has, has had an impact on, on county social services. That group has kind of been dormant for the last several years, and so they decided this year to get it started again. It's co-chaired by Representative Dave Pinto, a Democrat from St. Paul, and Senator Mark Johnson, a Republican from East Grand Forks. And they've had thus far just one meeting. They've indicated that they're going to meet over the interim on a monthly basis. And one of the things that they want to do is look at those 93 recommendations to see what, you know, maybe can be alleviated in terms of, of what, what counties are required to do with those, with, with this issue at this point. The last thing I just want to mention too is calling out your staff. We meet monthly, as everybody has indicated, and I work closely with Bob Cornelius, Sandy Schoburg, Jaclyn Litfin. All have been, you know, very helpful in establishing our, our platforms for MICA and very much active in, in that. And I just wanted to make sure that you're aware that they represent not only you very well, but counties as a whole.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So in the interest of time, I'm just going to pick like one item per slide here to, we also work in community corrections and public safety, do some work. We do a lot of this through collaboration with other partner associations. There's overlap on all of these things that Nancy talked about with, with corrections and public safety. So Nancy covered the restoration opioid settlement and data sharing. We did also, we're on the verge of success in the public safety funding area on community corrections and probation services funding. This is a significant underfunded state mandate. Counties take the lead on overseeing. In some cases, the counties oversee both felons and misdemeanors who are on probation and completing their sentences in the community. In some cases, the counties only oversee the misdemeanors, or they contract with the Department of Corrections. Either way, it's underfunded, and this was finally going to, going to catch up to at least 50% of funding level. But that did not happen and got caught up in the public safety conversations. Environment is another area where I jokingly say, in my free time, I try and do a little bit of work in environment, which is, counties have a significant role in. This year, really initiated some efforts that had been around for many years with colleague associations around SCORE grants or solid waste funding. The, the state residences and businesses pay a solid waste management tax. Less than 20% of that money gets back to counties to implement waste recycling reduction efforts, even though counties are the only governmental entity with responsibility, frankly, directly for meeting recycling goals. And so we wanted to try and get that number up. 30% of that money just goes into the state general fund. That was going to happen. Some of that money in the tax bill was going to move over to increased SCORE grants, roughly 15 to 20% increase in SCORE grants between two provisions. And ultimately, again, the environment bill and the, and the tax bill did not happen. So that brings me to the end, and then happy to stand for any questions. Where are we at today? Where we're at today is $7 billion in fiscal 2223 is remaining unallocated based on the February forecast. That's for the period that ends June 30th of 2023 is when that biennium ends. So some of that money, a substantial amount of that money is effectively in the bank, if you will. Some of it is still projected to come in, but I would point out that this is based on the February forecast. Since the February forecast, state collections have continued to exceed the February forecast, such that the state is actually estimated to get, to get an additional $2.9 billion by the end of 2023 on top of this $7 billion that's going unused. So the state's in a very healthy budget condition. And that's where we leave things. Absent a special session, we begin next year, January 3rd. And as I mentioned to some of you before the meeting started, just based on retirements, there will be at least a third or more, roughly 40% of new members in both bodies, and that's before the voters weigh in. So substantial number of new members to get to know and work with next session. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Just a comment, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to thank the staff from MICA. They're very professional. I've known them for as long as I've been on the county board, and Matt's been new, but Mike and, or Steve and Nancy have been around, and they do a very good job for us down there to, for our issues. If we have issues from the county or whatever, they seem to act on it right away. So I'd like, thank you for your service to us.
Definitely appreciated. Any other questions for Matt? Thank you very much for doing this.
Mr. Chair, quickly, thank Commissioner Pop and Commissioner Gopinski for serving on our board, and Tomonte and his entire team for their support and that we work with regularly too. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
If you don't mind.
Commissioner Gopinski, go ahead.
I just want to make sure on the consent agenda, I don't know if I included item number five. I think we listed items one through four.
I did, I did mention one through five.
Okay.
All right. So. And we'll just double check that.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
Yep.
Next up, administrator, resident concerns about manure hauling and dust on 45th Street Northeast?
Oh, sometimes it helps to have a map, show where we're at here. So let's see. There. Let's see. Oh, there it is. Yeah. So here's the, here's the big dairy south of town, and here's, here's the gravel road, which is the road in question. So is Lenny here? Lenny's here. So Lenny wished to address this issue to the board, and you may have some folks here in the audience that came along too?
I'm Marjorie.
Okay.
Oh, the rest of the group that's out there.
Hi, sir. Thank you. Yep. Hi, I'm Lenny Fiori. I live at 11610 45th Street Northeast in Foley. Last Tuesday, every resident along 45th Street was represented at a township board meeting. At that meeting, it was suggested that I put on the agenda a proposal to the county board so we can get something done about the hauling of manure on 45th Street a couple of times a year. When this takes place, it renders the road absolutely useless. Beyond being useless, it becomes dangerous. You have trailers, tractors pulling giant trailers at over 30 miles an hour, creating dust storms that not only can you not see, but it becomes apparent that you can't fit on the road. And so I personally get a mowing holiday for the ditch because I dare not mow in the ditch because last winter, they went into the ditch a half a dozen times because the trailer lost control and went and just rutted up the ditch to beat the band, so that had to be repaired. So we, we got together to try to see if the county could do something to come up with an alternative method of getting the manure from point A to point B.
And I certainly invited Chris and Roxanne to be here as well, and I think Commissioner Johnson, you're aware of this issue too.
I did become aware of it, yes.
Anybody have any questions on? I, I think what I need to do is to have information from Chris and Roxanne of what our authority is on that.
All right. I can speak to, I guess, the road, and I'll just be upfront, because nobody's going to like this. There's not much we can do. What the gentleman was just describing is what's called implements of husbandry. That's defined in state statute, and it doesn't have to do with animal husbandry or anything that, but any kind of agricultural equipment that is not self-propelled and being propelled or pulled by a tractor is considered an implement of husbandry. And I'm going to bring up a download of Minnesota State Statute. So Minnesota State Statute 169.801 says that implements of husbandry are exempt from size, weight, and load provisions. There's nothing we can do for governing the size and the weight of these equipment on our, our roads. Also, I want to say, point out the provisions of Section 169.80 to 169.88 do not, it goes on to say, do not apply to an implement of husbandry while operated in compliance with this statute. So then I want to bring up that statute as well, 169.88. And what that statute is, is the damage liability. Basically, it says this, "Any person operating a vehicle or object or contrivance upon any highway or highway structure shall be liable for all damage." But that previous statute I just read says that implements of husbandry are specifically exempt from liability of damage. So that's, that's where we're at, I think. State law allows those equipment to operate on public roads and specifically provides an exemption from damage. I will go back to this statute. It was successful, I think, back in 2008, 2009 timeframe, maybe. The statute did get changed at bridges, bridge postings. If there is a bridge that's posted for a lower weight capacity than, than legal, they are supposed to comply with that. The, the difficulty is with that, if they're exempt from weight on the road each side of that bridge, nobody's really checking that weight to know if they are complying with the bridge postings or something. If they do violate that bridge posting and say the bridge goes down, once again, statute provides an exemption from them paying for replacing of that structure. So there, with that being said, there's no permits that are required for them to, to operate, other than these other restrictions that are in here. It does, it was mentioned speed. In statute, it says that they are not to operate this, these implements of husbandry at a speed more than 30 miles an hour. So maybe that's something that could be looked into. I know we've, we've experienced the same thing on our county roads. Last year, one of our county roads, yeah, they, they were driving through the ditch and tearing up the slope next to the roadway.
Are they exempt from fixing that too?
Because, yeah, statute 160, yeah, the statute says that they're exempt from that statute 169.88, which says that you've damaged the roadway, you're, you're liable for that. So.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Johnson.
If I could, Chris, you know, it seems to me, and I, I heard Lenny speak now, and I've talked to some of the township officials, kind of seems like the bottom line to me is a concern of a, a big lack of some neighborly concern about what's going on in that township road. I, I don't think there's anybody in the room, and correct me if I'm wrong, are thinking that they can never run their equipment down the road, but there's a, a big lack of, of having a little neighbor concern here, especially when it's brought up. I remember specifically, and I did confirm this with Roxanne, when we had our, our public hearing and our conditional use permit for that property, it was sold to the planning commission that the majority of that manure was going to be pumped over property, not hauled. And obviously, I don't think there's anybody that's going to hold him to 100% that he can never haul manure, but it was, we had limited discussion in regards to pumping that manure to keep tractors off the roads as much as possible. So that's kind of a big letdown to me. I did verify with Roxanne, to my knowledge, and correct me if I'm wrong, there's no conditions on the conditional use permit that talks about that being in place, but there are, there is discussion in our minutes in regards to pumping versus hauling and keeping them off Highway 25 and, and 45th. So with that said, and Lenny, correct me if I'm wrong, I think that's the bigger issue here, is we've got a lack of, of concern for the neighbors.
Yeah, it's pure disregard. I mean, it would be like me taking my 4100 and riding up and down the road at 50 miles an hour and creating a 50-foot dust storm all the time. It, it just makes no sense. I was approached by one of the owners of the facility on Friday night, and he mentioned that they were going to try to pump the majority of the product next time they do it. But he was supposed to be here, I don't know if he's here or not, and talk about that solution. But it involves running a pipe from the, from the cow barn all the way west to where they, they would put it into the fields. And it would be run through the ditches and through the culverts and everything else. And from a cost standpoint, it's lower cost for them because they got to pump it anyway, and maybe one additional, you know, intermediate pump, pumping station to help it out. It would eliminate much of the noise, almost all of the dust, and, and be a tenable solution. But I don't know what the end game is there, what permissions they need to get it to run and everything else. But to me, it was just a complete lack of neighborly friendliness, and, and since it was a third party who did all this, you know, hauling, to me, it's no different than if I bought a D10 dozer and had somebody haul it. You know, they're no longer a farmer, they're a hauling company. They're hauling, you know, the same as the guy who hauls gasoline to Brenney's, they're hauling liquid. So I think that somebody could look at these existing rules and say, wait a second, this is not, it may be the letter of the law, but it certainly wasn't the spirit of the law to allow these people to run up and down this road at a huge speed. I mean, Mike's property sits I mean, Mike's property sits forty feet higher than the roadway, and he was engulfed in the cloud. So, I fortunately live a hundred feet off the road with the forest between me and the road, and I still have a layer of dust on my pond to this day that is not going away. It, it got adversely affect everybody, so anything that you guys can do would be greatly appreciated.
Commissioner Pop?
So, I've had complaints, and I know, you know, I, I farm a haul manure myself, and it's about being a good neighbor. I've had complaints last, I believe it was either last spring or last fall, about the duration of time, like if it was an all-night affair going through the city of rice or hauling manure and neighbors in there, and somehow, I think, we need to have restrictions on that, or I know we can't, you know, on the timeframe, but we don't need the haul manure at twelve-thirty, one o'clock at night. I know it's a large amount of manure, needs to be pumped, it needs to be on in a timely fashion, but you've still got to be a good neighbor.
Mr. Chair, I'd agree. I farm also, giving an example, you talked about the neighborly part of it. I hire people to pump my pit also, and I was out in my skid loader scraping the road off from the amount of mud that was hauled off the field onto the road. I, I guess I just felt that was something I needed to do, even though I wasn't the one who hauled the mud on the road, right? I'm still ultimately responsible for it. It's my manure going out.
Bottom line.
Exactly. So, that, that's my frustration, is the lack of that. And Mr. Chair, I did see Commissioner Pop, when you're done, that the owner is here, and I'd like to hear from him.
And this is not only an issue that's, you know, in our county, it's in other counties that the same thing. As these dairies get larger and larger, whether it's dairy or hogs or what it is, they do a lot of pumping and they got a lot of manure to move in a relatively short period of time, but you still have to be friendly, and either they're going to have to, to be more friendly or that, or counties are not going to look friendly up having these dairies or these hog facilities or whatever it may be in their county, because I know several counties in the western part of the state that they are not friendly anymore to granting permits for these, because they just think that we're a large dairy and we can kind of do it when we want.
Well, and, and Mr. Chair, and this county, as you well know, has, has a very strong right to farm ordinance.
Right.
So, we've got this double-edged sword of protecting ag, yet we don't have the responsibility there all the time to do it.
Right.
And so, that's, that's a problem. Anyways, Mr. Chair.
Thanks for those comments. I will adjust it later, I've got some more comments, but go ahead. Whoever would like to adjust the board.
My name is Julie Trelle, I'm at 11424 Forty-Fifth Street Northeast Foley, and I was here back at the time when the conditional use permit was being reviewed. We talked about some of these issues. I could not ever, ever imagine that this is what it would look like after the fact. But just listening to what I've heard this morning, I think what's being overlooked here is safety, not only just the tolerance of the neighbors, but the safety. It's not safe when this is happening, and I don't think the statute that I heard about excused safety as part of that. And it's not only manure hauling, but it's the extra food that's needed for those animals, and the number of trucks or pieces of equipment that haul that, which also creates a safety issue. So, just wanted to bring up the safety part of it.
Thank you.
Mike Radka, 11609 Forty-Fifth Street. This is the first year this has happened. Somebody had asked me township, county, whatever, is there any communication? I went back through text messages, I got a text message from 2020. I have two text messages from this year to Brent's son, no response. Tell them dust control needs to be done. You say the county can't do nothing, the county granted their conditional use permit. I think it was the third permit that was written. It says must follow all Minnesota pollution control guidelines, okay? Minnesota pollution control controls dust, regardless of the laws of what the engineer said. This is a third party hired, that changes that law. Yes, it's a tractor, yes, it's a manure tank, it changes the liability of the custom hauler, plus Minnesota pollution control changes the law as far as dust. So, I think we're overlooking what needs to be done. The county can do something with this because they're not following the rest of it. Now, my suggestion's not to shut them down, but something has to be done. I think it should be in writing because these are non-residents of Benton County. Because if they were living at the farm, none of this would have happened.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Gopinski.
Chris, can you talk on that? Maybe a clarification.
We, we've heard the same things. This, this is a commercial operation, and I think that, that seems to be true. It's not, it's not dad and grandpa hauling manure from barn to the fields anymore, these are custom haulers, you know? It's any business, they, they need to do business to stay afloat and do things, and I mean, a lot of that is maximizing efficiency. It's, it's, that's come to us, we've looked at it, and it doesn't seem like there's any differentiation whether it's the owner of the farm doing it or a commercial operation that's not really addressed in statute. You, you heard Mike talk about, I know that's something that the County Engineers Association, we've tried to address as well. It is, it is a growing concern across the state. And I think unfortunately, as a local policy board, our hands are kind of tied by what the state, state rules are. I don't know. It, Mr. Radka did mention pollution control. I know that that was a recent change in statute about dust being recognized as a pollutant, and excessive dust could lead to something, but I, I don't know how that's enforced or how that's managed. I mean, as it's happening, a resident could call in, say there's aggressive dust, by the time MPCA comes out to investigate, the dust is all settled, and so how do you, how do you, how do you handle that?
Commissioner John.
Sorry.
Johnson.
Roxanne, maybe, maybe you can speak on that a little bit. I know that we've had conversation with Michelle Meyer in regards to what that talks about a little bit, and maybe you can share that, that conversation.
Yeah, well, I, I, I guess what I would say is that the PCA would have to be involved in that, but the conditional use permit is strictly for the property, so I don't know that we could do anything about what's happening off of the property. So, if there was dust concerns on the property, that would be one thing, and it would be related to the conditional use permit, but this is happening outside of it, and frankly, it could be anywhere in the county that they were driving and having dust concerns. So, I don't know that it would relate specifically back to the conditional use permit.
So, did you say you brought this forward to Michelle, or are we going to?
I did discuss this with her in regards to enforcement related to the road of maintenance and use, and because it's a township road, we don't have the authority to do any sort of enforcement on that.
So, it's up to the township, then?
Well, yes, but at the same time, as Chris mentioned, it, I don't know that there's things that can occur, and I'm not sure how that process works with the PCA as far as dust control, if reports need to be sent into them. I know there's ways that you can send in complaints to the PCA, and I guess that would maybe be my suggestion.
Commissioner Pop?
So, we can't control, or, you know, we control dust when contractors are hauling gravel or something like that. I mean, and, and I don't know if there's any rules to that, but usually if we go out there and meet with the contractor, they water the road or they do something like that. I, I think that's, it goes right back to the responsibility of the, either the company that's pumping the manure or the owner of the dairy, that they take care of that. And I mean, I'm not, when, when we, when we have complaints like this, I'm not, coming from the ag sector, I'm not very friendly towards complaints like this, because they're, sure, they're a business doing a lot of, you know, paying a lot of taxes and doing a lot of business in the county, buying a lot of local stuff, but we still have to be in compliance or be a good neighbor like everybody else in the county.
Commissioner Gopinski?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Johnson, you mentioned that the owner of the property is here, or the owner of the property?
Yeah, I think I saw him raise his hand.
I would like to hear from them to see what their plan is doing.
Their perspective on this, yeah.
Name's Myron Chek. My address is 12662 125th Street, Little Falls, Minnesota. I am one of three owners of New Heights Dairy LLC. It's owned by, my son is a fifty percent owner, and my wife and I are each twenty-five percent. My son Brent is the president of New Heights Dairy, I'm the secretary treasurer, and my wife is the vice president. My son's unable to be here today, he's at a corn growers event today, which many of you know what's going on. I have tried to meet with the majority of the neighbors on the road, and I take responsibility for not having better communication with the neighbors on the road. It was stated that we don't live in Benton County. Well, my son does live in Benton County, has a rice, rice address, and I, I, of course, live in Little Falls. To me, the most important thing here is safety, and when the neighbors mention the safety issue, to me, that, that's key. And dust, dust is a big issue on all large dairies, and all township gravel roads for that matter. But to our fault, we sometimes look at things a little different. We think if we hauled one load of manure a day for three hundred and sixty-five days a year, everybody would probably be fine. One little cloud of dust, no big deal. But we haul all that manure in two days, and we hauled approximately a hundred and eighty loads, which is half as much, but because we did it all in two days, we created a dangerous environment. And, and we know that, and we're not hiding behind the fact that we hire a third party to do it. We do hose about eighty percent of our manure. Almost everything east of Highway twenty-five is drag lined. We have a, a pipe has been buried underneath the highway even from the previous owners, and it's all been upgraded, and we have stand pipes out in different fields, so we can go, we go several miles to the east of the manure. And the, what we have is the one, excuse me, the one ninety-acre field, we call the Montgomery Farm. And we possibly in error made the decision a few years back to not attempt to hose that field because we considered it to be a difficult one to get to. We have to cross a little creek, somehow or a bridge, and several, several residences that are close to the road and, and mow the lawn and groom the lawn right up to the edge of the road. And in our experience, hosing manure, which is about twenty-five years, again, we do the majority of our manure with hoses, the more people's lawns you have to get close to, or the more tough crossings, it's just higher degree of difficulty. And after talking to them, I can see that it could have been done, and it will be done. So, I would just like to, I would like to map out what I think is the route. We leave the dairy, now we come into Mr. Fiori's land, and he's agreed there's two culverts that we can go through, and then, and then we cross the centerline culvert in, in Forty-Fifth Street into Mike Radka's property, approximately, what, a hundred feet west of his driveway? And then I think we can continue in the road ditch there, through the lateral property, and right through the Greg Lateral's front yard. He verbally said it was okay to do that. Then on through Andrew Sheffer's farm, and then we will have to bore the highway there. I'm not sure the number of that road, but we have, would have to bore it to get across it, and then we go through a field owned by Eugenia Rudolph after that, and then we're at the farm. It's about two miles, it's doable, easily doable if all parties are in cooperation. So, as long as we have that, I think we can do it. And that should take care of the majority of the manure hauling. I'd be reluctant to ever say in a permit that I will do one hundred percent drag lining of manure because we don't know in the future what's coming. We're working with some methane companies now who may want to move manure between farms or different things, and if everything has to be hosed, that would be something that I could see in the future that we could run into problems with. But we're concerned about getting that ninety-acre field covered, or whatever kind of is, goes with it, and for sure in the short term. The field was our lowest fertility field, so it needed a larger amount of manure per acre than most other fields. We've kind of got it up to where we need it now, so we're more at a maintenance level. So, my estimation would be that we'd probably need to manure that every other year, and we'd probably tend to do that in the fall so that we don't have the, well, there are still things with hosing manure that are issues. We have to drive a hose reel along the edge of the road and get that hose into the road, and then as we're, we have to have a booster pump, which just from my observation, seems like it would be, I think it would be a couple hundred yards west of the lateral home. And I think that might be far enough away that the, the noise, which is a constant running of a diesel engine, wouldn't, I don't think would disturb people overly great amount. And then we'll have to, again, bore the highway, and usually that, that isn't much of a problem once it's in, goes unnoticed. So, I think we've got a solution for that. But just hauling a manure isn't the only issue on the road, I realize that. We still have to harvest the crop, and it usually takes about two days to harvest out there. And again, if it was a truckload a day, probably wouldn't be as big of a deal, but doing everything in, in forty-eight hours and going through the night a lot of times makes it a bigger issue. So, we, we'd like to work with the township on some watering, looking into chloride. Everybody has a little bit different opinion on chloriding a road, just from the people that I talked to, it's, I'm just not sure where we're going to go with that, but water should be a fairly safe thing to use. So, that would address the dust during the harvest time as well, so. And then the other thing, speed on the road, I guess I'd certainly willing to work with the township on that. We hire a custom operator to do this, and it's no secret, we're in business to try to make money and keep our heads above water. We want them to, to work fast, and maybe I'm guilty of pushing a little bit too hard, so sometimes they'll go through the night or late into the night. But again, it's, for harvest, it's about two days. Willing to, to work with the neighbors on that, but again, neighborly, it works two ways, so, and, and I know we've been negligent, but we want to step up and at least do our part to present some kind of a, a solution to these, to these things, so.
Commissioner Pop? Oops, sorry. Go ahead, sir.
I was just going to say, well, go ahead, ask the question.
So, good to see you again, Myron. Do you ever do, does your custom operator put up on any signs, you know, if you get down in the Renville County, some of them, they put up signs, trucks hauling or manure transportation or anything like that, do they, you know, that would, maybe some of the people that would go on this road would turn and take a different route at that time to, you know, for the safety standards?
Not that I know of, but I think it's a point well taken, it would be an excellent idea to put trucks hauling on each end of Forty-Fifth Street.
You've been down in that area when you see, you know, trucks hauling when they're doing the beets and stuff like that. That would be something that might curve the safety factor a little bit.
If we had sugar beets on that ninety-acre field, it would be a whole different.
Yeah, right.
Might be throwing darts at me.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, Myron, just a quick question. If I understand the location right, you're probably coming down Forty-Fifth to Sixty-two, and then are you taking a left and going down to Forty-second?
For thirty acres of the field is easier to go to the south than sixty acres to the north.
Sure. So, I guess what I'm getting at is you've got township roads there too that are going to potentially be an issue now that I see, I, I noticed there's a, a new building, new property structure just south of Andrew Sheffer's on, on that gravel that goes to the west. I, I think there's a new construction site there, and so I, I just think it, I'd, I'd be a little leery of eliminating it maybe to that. I mean, if, if one of your ideas is going to be to water the roads twice a day, it's probably going to be the roads that you're on and not just theirs.
That would be my assessment too, is that, 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 those two streets, and one of them's Mockingbird Road, would also be the beneficiary of what, what we negotiate, decide we're going to do for Forty-Fifth Street.
Yeah, because we're dealing with all township roads here, with the exception of Sixty-two. Quickly, Chris, Sixty-two, would he need a utility easement, or how would he go about boring under Sixty-two to put a culvert in there to have access?
Yeah, that we would treat like utility permit, and we've done that at other locations across the county, we've allowed them, and we specify the culvert. The big thing is just documenting that, that culvert underneath the roadway is for this kind of operation and not for drainage, so we don't get into a situation in the future where somebody says, hey, you were draining something you weren't, or we need to clean this out because it's not draining. It's like, we need to establish that, you know, that's pipe underneath the roadway was for pumping and not draining any surface water.
And one other clarification, Chris, and a lot of our county roads, road right-of-way are thirty-three feet off the centerline, what is it for the townships?
Unless they have other easements, usually that's typically what it is, because that's, that's.
It'll follow the county.
Comes back from a really old state law that says, any new road shall be a minimum of sixty-six.
So, my point is, in trying to work out this whole ordeal, is that everybody, including myself, we have to remember there's a road right-of-way there that belongs to So my point is in trying to work out this whole ordeal is that everybody, including myself, we have to remember there's a road right of way there that belongs to all of us. You know, I can appreciate Gary Moses' lawn. I do too. I like to take it right up to the road. At the end of the day, we don't own that. And so it, it's just important, it's an important consideration. You know, they've had some verbal discussion and Gary apparently has verbally agreed to allow that hose to run through there. That's an area that he's mowing and I appreciate that. I bet the township does too. Uh, but that road right of way belongs to the public.
That's right. And there, and why you just highlight the challenge is a, a board like you trying to balance that for all the needs of all the users of that roadway. You've got agricultural traffic, you've got residential traffic, you've got business traffic, trying to build and maintain a roadway that suits the needs of all those users. So.
You know, and we talked about signage and I'm just thinking out loud here, one of the options especially around Gary's is if he's mowing that lawn, maybe that hose comes right up to the road edge and it's signed, you know, something. It, it's just another neighborly thing to do to keep, you know, because it could very well be misting and raining, right? When you're running the hose. And when you guys are dragging your four wheelers through there to lay the hose through the lawn that he's mowing, even though it's not necessarily his, it's just the neighborly thing I would think to do. You know, that's what we got to keep in front of us here. Because I don't, I haven't heard anybody say, and, and Mr. Rattka's comment, and so it's not like we're trying to run him out of business. I don't think that's the point. We just gotta quit speculating on all this stuff and, you know, come forward and be neighborly about it because it affects all of us, right?
There's no better neighbor to have for a farm than a healthy farm that wants to stay in business and grow and improve. The last thing you want is a farm that's headed out of business and doesn't care anymore.
Exactly.
In my opinion. And I just make one more comment about, about road ditches. We obviously own a lot of land up to roads and road ditches too. And sure, it's, the road has a thirty-three foot easement, but we never treat that as though it's public property that we can just trample over. We treat it as though it's your yard.
And I guess I would just highlight, because I know you mentioned yard that Gary's mowing, you know, that just kind of becomes a little more elevated to be careful with because he's taken the time and effort to mow that public ditch.
Mr. Chair, um, getting back to the safety portion of this, Myron, I think the watering could be very, very huge. When it comes to speed, that's what's creating the dust. I mean, obviously the big vehicles create the dust. Then it becomes people behind or in front can't see. So if we start watering some of this, it might alleviate a lot of, lot of issues, uh, on the gravel roads. Cause speed is, uh, speed is bad if it's, if nobody can see. You know, and, and I'm not saying that these vehicles should be going over thirty miles an hour. I'm not saying that at all, but.
Even thirty miles an hour, you know, if you've got dust is too much, you know? And, um, I'll just give a shout out from Myron. I've known Myron for, God, many, many years and he's always run a really good operation as far as that goes. So I'm sure he'll alleviate this problem and try to get, get together with the neighbors and solve it.
Mr. Chair and Myron, if I could, is this discussion you've had with Brent directly? I mean, is this, or is this just your discussion on this? Because you, you mentioned before Brent's a fifty percent partner here. And so I realize you have the father-son relationship, but if he's half owner on this, is he aware of the things you're talking about today?
I'd be willing to give you my cell phone to look at and I talk twenty to thirty times a day on the phone, every day.
All right. So he's very much aware of the problem. Okay.
Residents, got anything else to add? Okay, anything else?
Mr. Chair, I, I would assume that we'll hear back if, uh,
If he doesn't follow through with his plan?
Yep.
If I could just make one final closing comment, I'd like to thank the neighbors that everything was in such a civil manner. And, uh, I know it kind of surprised me. We, we had a text from Mike and so forth. It was about the time we were done hauling or real kind of close to when we were finishing up. So we weren't going to bring a pumper in to finish the last twelve hours or whatever. But, um, even with the best intent, things can go wrong. Uh, it was mentioned that, um, that tankers were going down in the ditches previously. Well, that was, I think that was closer to a year ago. This spring I devised a new method to haul manure where we'd have a caravan. Everybody would go, they'd group together in four or five tanks and make one pass down the road. So nobody had to pass each other. So no driving in the, on the shoulders. Well, consequence of that was that it's even more dangerous because one, the first one makes the dust. And if a car is pulling out and doesn't realize there's four tankers in a row, it's way more dangerous. So it's, it's an attempt to try to make things better, but actually backfire. And I never want people to think that, that we can achieve perfection because it's, it's really unattainable. But we can try to do a good job and try to do the best we can. And if I, if I get input, we'll try to react a lot quicker than what we did on this manure hauling thing.
Mr. Chair, if I could, I just want to recap here real quickly. So we're on the record. You know, we're talking about hopefully watering township roads that you're traveling on, maybe. And, and to me, this is a cost of doing business. It really stinks, but it's a cost of doing business. And maybe it's twice a day, whatever that's going to be. And maybe you get back to your idea of, of the train of traffic. If the dust is not an issue, you're all traveling together, right? So that and, and whatever potential pumping you're going to be able to do, because I, I realize, I, I know that you're probably doing eighty percent of it on the east side of Twenty-five because Twenty-five was a concern trying to cross and get on and off, right? But, you know, we want to try to alleviate that off of these township roads too, as much as possible. Um, and just to highlight the safety concerns, Commissioner Kapinski brought it up, Julie Terrell brought it up. Everybody's heard that. So I, I think the concerns are pretty clear and so, and what the expectations are.
And just moving forward with a clear definition and clarification of what you're going to do and communication to all the neighbors.
And I think your township board's more than willing to work with you in regards to maybe help with some signage. Maybe there's something else that you guys can work together on to. You know, the, the little things go a long way with these neighbors, like keeping a hose off Gary Lateral's mowed lawn.
And Mike had a really good point when I talked to him. And that's this year we hauled manure on June eighth and ninth. Normally on June eighth and ninth, the crop should be in and up and ground should be covered. But because of the heavy rains, I think we had about six inches in April, kind of pushed fully to the last thing we did. And we could not get tanks on a field. We were all too wet. So at that time, the sun's higher, the days are longer, more hot wind and, uh, probably made the problem twice as bad as, as it would have been a month earlier.
And Myron, if I could challenge you to keep that communication open with the neighbors, and I think that's going to go a long way for your operation.
Yes, if I could add, represent yourself, show your face, the contract you hired, did you know favors his comments, his black.
Okay, anything else? Thank you, Myron.
Thank you.
Thank you, residents, for your concerns. Hope that they can get addressed.
Mr. Chair, could we let Johanna introduce Scott? Make sure we get that, because we need to go in a closed session here in a few minutes.
Yep. We'll move up on the agenda. Go ahead, Johanna.
Good morning, Commissioners and Chair.
Good morning.
In twenty twenty-two, a new position, um, you guys approved for, within our safety program in our human resource department. This position is, uh, going to be assisting also our leave management programs, our health and wellness, and then training throughout the county. So I'm excited to announce that Scott Rowe accepted the position and started yesterday. So from there, I'm just going to let him introduce himself.
Great.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you. Commissioners, first off, I'd like to say thank you for your hard, hard work yesterday out in the heat and, uh, serving the employees of Benton County. That was very special and we do appreciate that. So.
Welcome.
Um, again, I'm Scott. Um, I've always worked in the private sector, um, HR manager, environmental health, safety. I'm working with all the different, um, entities of federal, state, local, and, uh, Department of Homeland Security. And so there's going to be challenges of learning some things with the public sector, which, you know, I do, I do like the challenges and things. I'm kind of sitting with Johanna yesterday in a meeting, kind of listening to some concerns and things and how, uh, we can bridge some gaps and have understandings of what everybody's purpose is and how we can remain safe and not only in the workplace, but also in each department and everything. I appreciate the opportunity.
Welcome.
Great. Welcome to Benton County.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have time to do the emergency management.
That one might be.
That one's going to be a little longer than you think. Just throwing it out there.
Mr. Chair, yeah, would you consider moving maybe additional item like, uh,
Let's, uh, can we move to, uh, Nadine? Let her do hers?
I think Heather's here.
Heather's here.
Yep, let's do Heather.
I'll stick around for the rest.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Um, I'm here to look for appointments to the canvassing board for the primary election. The canvassing board includes two members of the county board who are not candidates at the election pursuant to Minnesota statute two oh four C point thirty-one. The point of the canvas is to review the vote total, certify the results and declare the nominees or winners. We have the meeting scheduled for Thursday, August eleventh at ten AM in the boardroom. Do we have two volunteers that are not candidates at the election who would like to serve on the canvassing board?
I would like to serve. I would think we're going to need an alternate though. I may have a conflict, but I'd like to be here if I could. We should have an alternate if possible.
Commissioner Schlongen, if you're willing. Commissioner Johnson?
Well, then I'll be the alternate.
And Commissioner Kapinski. Okay.
And just meet in your office, Heather?
Um, we're going to meet here in the boardroom.
Okay.
Okay, you guys want to make that a motion, please?
I'll make that a motion that we, we select Mr. Johnson, Commissioner Schlongen with Commissioner Kapinski as the alternate to the canvassing board.
I'll second that. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion or clarification? Any questions to Heather? Now they'll call the question. Oh, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Heather. Monty, go ahead.
Our topic is the emergency management, uh, function. There was discussion at a recent committee, the whole, uh, to possibly move this, uh, position function to human services as a full-time position and then add to its role, uh, various human services responsibilities. And, uh, Bob provided those on your agenda item under item number two, and you can see A through B. The various administrative tasks that Bob envisions for this position over at human services. So again, about halftime emergency management, halftime, human services, department planning. I think if you have questions about the, the human services functions and so on, I definitely would invite Bob up to discuss those. We talked a bit about emergency management and it's, it's largely a planning role. Your responsibility is to maintain various county emergency response plans, uh, coordinate occasional, uh, exercises and drills. You, you serve as during the course of an incident or emergency, you're the, you're the coordinator of the county's emergency operations center. Uh, you, 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 you have a responsibility to attend various trainings, uh, required by the state to maintain your certification and apply for and, and monitor grants that we get for human, excuse me, emergency management functions. So that's kind of a nutshell of the, the emergency management role. And again, I'll just turn it over to Bob if you had questions about the human services functions.
Commissioner Kapinski first.
Mr. Chair, uh, after we talked about this a couple of weeks ago, I, I gotta say I'm a hundred percent opposed to this move into human services. I, uh, I look at it as you just read off a lot of things that are emergency management and if, if you, if, uh, granted COVID came into play and stuff, that's what brought human services into it. I mean, there's a lot of things that, that reside, running an emergency management, um, sector, if there's a tornado that comes through and wipes out a bunch of area or something like that is way different than a, than a health issue. And I, I think that we, we need to have this re reside somewhere else completely.
And I share the exact same opinion as Commissioner Kapinski. I think we've got to move it to a different area. I'll let Commissioner Pop talk.
Well, I may be not opposed to moving it to human services as much as the fifty-fifty split. I think we were at thirty-two hours a week last time?
Thirty-five, I think is what's budgeted for, yeah.
So that's, that's not a fifty-fifty, uh, split. And I guess I, I would be opposed to moving it to human services on a fifty-fifty. Deal. I think it, I think they, they made it quite clear and I, I too agree that it's a, it's a pretty valuable position in times. There may be times where it would work, but I don't think there's just as many times where it wouldn't work.
So you may recall when we were having committee the whole, we sort of explored various options and, and one of course is you, you could keep it in administrator's office at thirty-five hours a week or, or full-time, you know, you could move it to forty. Or another options was, was to move it to the sheriff's office. Either it's current thirty-five hours a week or you could bump it to, to forty or, you know, some other number. I'm just curious to hear certainly the feedback that you all have on, on where you think might be the best organizational fit, uh, for the position.
Mr. Johnson.
Just a question, Monty, and maybe this is for Bob. If I recall correctly, there was some discussion about potential dollars available to us, uh, if it wasn't human services, but I don't remember any final discussion on what that really is.
And we, we tried to identify that in the, in the agenda item. Peggy did some work for us. And her estimation is if you, it's a, based upon being a full-time forty-hour-a-week position, she could claim about thirteen thousand dollars in federal administrative reimbursement, uh, for the position. So that effectively would cover the extra cost of moving it from thirty-five to forty hours a week.
So would it be fair to say that if hypothetically we moved it to the sheriff's office, we don't have access to the thirteen thousand?
Wouldn't, no.
If we had it in administrator's office, would we have access to it?
No, no.
Okay.
If that's, it, it has to do that human services function to be billable.
Okay. I just want to be crystal clear about that.
To those, to those grants.
Mr. Chair.
I think, go, go ahead. I think, Monty, we're going to have to have more communication on this. My perspective anyway. Commissioner Kapinski.
I'm really worried about, uh, uh, you know, human service is always busy and this is a kind of position that you hope you never need. But when you do, they better be available, better be trained and better be able to give full support of it. And, uh, I just, if we're splitting it fifty-fifty, there's a chance where something isn't a hundred percent up to speed and then we have an issue that comes to play.
I just wanted to, I guess, mention one thing too, is I, I'm certainly comfortable with it staying in administrator's office. I think, oh, so, so why did we talk about moving to another department? I think some of it was my belief that I didn't feel it, it needed to be thirty-five hours a week. I guess I felt, you know, I've been observing the position for, and the function for sixteen years, it probably could be half-time. So I thought, okay, if we're going to keep it half-time, what's another department that we're hearing needs help, that needs the resources? And, and, and that was why I thought about human services and primarily public health as a place, uh, you know, if it's going to be full-time, let's put it someplace that needs, needs the help. But of course, uh, it's certainly a viable option to keep it where it sits today at, at thirty-five hours a week or, or again, also to full-time.
I, I think we know we're not going to get somebody to apply for this position if it's only going to be part-time. I, I think we're all under that same impression, you know, that it would have to be forty hours a week for this position to get anybody to apply for it. Commissioner Pop.
Mr. Chair, before, when we, when we talked before, um, I'm maybe lean towards if we could find somebody full-time and take, uh, ten hours, fifteen hours, if he's got some grant writing skills. That would sure benefit the county in more ways than one, but I don't know if that person's out there. That'd be my, my really question whether that's available.
Yeah, I should add is that at thirty-five hours a week, the position is, is benefit eligible? So I think the threshold is, um, or Scott, is, is thirty hours a week or, or, or above makes you eligible for health insurance and so on.
Mr. Mr. Chair, um, are you thinking that, I'm hearing you want further discussion on this, maybe on another call with human services? And I don't understand that we're under a real tight timeline on this.
It's not super tight. You know, I know there's like a quarterly meeting that, that someone must attend. And I know there, there, there's a conference coming up in September that someone must attend. I guess in the short term, I can go to these things and, and cover that base. But I think, you know, at some point in the relatively near future, it'd be nice to get a recruitment going on this, yeah.
Chances are we probably won't have that position filled anyway.
Yeah. Probably not. No, certainly not by this quarterly meeting that's coming up here into July. No. And the, the conference is sometime in September.
Right. And Mr. Chair, um, you're, you're pretty busy this time of the year, starting up.
Yep.
Budgets. So, um, I don't know if a conference could fit into your.
Yeah, you know, we'll do what we gotta do. So.
Do you know when the conference is? I might be interested.
I don't recall exactly. Yeah, I, I'll have to look on the, and see the exact, it's, it's the Emergency Managers Association Conference. And some of these are actually mandatory for, for the emergency management director to maintain their state certification and get their.